Alright, alrighty there, you are here with DG the thirty something. With the State of the Union Show. I have been doing candidate interviews lately, so I'm really excited to do so. And if you missed it, you are listening to KPCA. And you can catch the show on kpc.fm. Or 103.3 and I'm going to give you a few more options because we are offering at the end or the second half of the show. Uh, you know, some audience questions, so let me start. With uh, it is nine eleven and so I would like to give a brief uh moment of silence. To the fallen and everything that has gone on with nine eleven and. I really like the unity and resilience of the country, so we are going to give a little moment of silence. Alrighty, so we are gonna get uh started here. And I'm going to give my little spiel that I've been giving before every candidate interview here. And I want to start by saying I'm really excited to offer the opportunity to uh. Interview the local candidates for city council and mayor. And uh, you can see the full schedule, so there's a few schedule uh, a full schedule. And there is a few different programmers that are actually interviewing the candidates, so. Please check into kpc.fm to see the full schedule for candidate interviews. Of course, what is expressed here does not reflect the opinions of KPCA, PCA. Or any of its members and no endorsements will be made over the air. As I said, the second half of the show will be opened up for public questions. You can email questions to D O M A Y N E. At M A B E R M E dot com. Uh via phone at seven oh seven nine eight one seven five seven seven. Or on the DG the thirty something page if you are watching on Facebook. Uh, my content producer Melissa will be answering the phones if you uh call in, so be nice. And so for the purpose of these interviews, we'd like to keep the questions uh. Addressing the future issues uh and the candidate strategies to address them in Petaluma. I'd like to stay away from questions regarding political affiliation voter history or the like. And all the questions if they come in will be asked anonymously. To avoid who wants to be covered and who doesn't. And so I am now going to give the opportunity for our candidate in the. Studio to introduce themselves.
Thank you DG, uh it's a pleasure to be here. Um, so I'm Michael Regan and I'm running for city council. Uh, you know, I've been in Petaluma since the early nineties. And I love this community, love that my kids are here, uh you know, raising my family. And it's one of those things, I've been incredibly involved in the community. Uh, from the Petaluma Host Lions, Petaluma Young Professionals Network, being on the board of those two organizations. Uh, then on the uh, I've been on the board of the Petaluma Educational Foundation. Uh, for the past five years and I was just recently the president. And then uh also um, I was the chair of the trans advisory committee for the city of Petaluma. Uh, so I've been involved, you know, for years in the city, I really care about where we're going. Um, and it's really important to me, so, so that's really what motivated me to run was. You know, we have a lot of issues that are coming to the forefront and we need to be proactive, not reactive. Uh, and I do see myself as someone with that leadership experience and experience with the city and running a business in town. Uh, that I can bring that to the city council, so I'm really looking forward to. Uh, you know, getting to know as many people and and uh, once if I'm fortunate enough to get on the council, really moving this town forward. So, that's a little bit about me.
So I did also want to include, I didn't include at the beginning of the show, but each candidate that is being interviewed was sent. Uh, this was a question I got asked recently, so each candidate that was being interviewed was sent a set set of questions. Prior, I think it's been like a month since they were sent those questions, so. I just want to be clear about that and then the second half of the show again will be open to public questions, so. Just wanted to remind people of that since I was asked that recently. So, uh, we'll get into these set questions, so what policy, strategies or the like? Do you propose to manage the rapid growth in Petaluma? While uh preserving the small town in historic charm and. During my first interview, I was asked uh what I consider to be rapid growth, very fair question. Uh, I consider growth within the last fifteen or twenty years.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, cause I think. You know, you hear a lot of people complaining about or or at least concerned about the amount of growth we've had recently. And that comes to, you know, basically fruition is, is the reason this has happened is during the crash, obviously through two thousand eight. Uh, for almost a decade, we had no building in town. And that's a problem, obviously, and and there just wasn't economic forces to have building in town. So now all of a sudden, there's the demand, there's a pent up demand. And now you see a ton of building in town and so it seems a little overwhelming, like there's too much going on. Really, it just happens to be, you know, just the timing of it all, having gone through the crash, having no building for a decade. And then all of a sudden, you get to the last couple of years, you have all these projects going up. Um, it's not normal for our city to have this much building at one time, so I don't think it's something necessarily. You could plan perfectly, but we do have the general plan. That says, you know, this is where our growth is, this is how, where we're supposed to have things. Uh, so it's one of those things that again, I think it just normally you you don't control growth in terms of. All these projects happening at one time, it's just kind of happened because of the the, you know, the great recession we went through and the demand. Uh, but it's one of those things that we work with in the general plan. That projects make sense and if they make sense for the town, we approve them. But at the same time, they have to make sense, right? So if you're trying to put a, you know, a huge development right downtown. And it doesn't fit with the downtown area, that's something we're not gonna do. So it needs to be development that actually benefits the city, makes sense. And that we address all the issues in terms of parking, in terms of walkability, bicycle, is it near public transportation? Is it near the freeway, things like that, so it's really project specific. But if a project addresses all that, makes sense and we should absolutely do it. If it doesn't, then obviously we shouldn't move forward with that. So, basically that's kind of how it is and and I understand people are concerned with the rapid growth right now. But again, just realize that's not necessarily normal. Is that it was just kind of pent up demand because of the great recession and we didn't have any building for so long.
Alrighty, so uh, what additional issue not addressed above? Uh, is high on your list to address if elected into office?
Huge, public safety. Um, I think it it's crazy to me that it isn't being addressed more. It's one of those things where the number one role of a government is protect its people, I mean, that's really what it comes down to. And you know, Chief Savano sent out a a release uh the other day, week or two ago. You know, saying that look, we're gonna have to reduce services because we're so limited on staff, I mean, we have like fifteen openings. Uh, and the problem is not only do we have fifteen openings, but in our police academy, I think we only have one recruit going through. Where a city like Renner Park has twelve. Uh, so we have a problem and we need to address that. So when a police officer is not able to come out when your car gets broken into unless there's physical evidence. Uh, or a lead, essentially that's a problem, if you get hurt, you know, if there's an accident, but it's not, someone actually did get hurt. A police officer is not coming up, that's a problem when the city can't provide those basic services. Cause a lot of times, a lot of people, that's the only time they may actually see police, right? They may have that interaction and we need to be positive, not, oh, I'm sorry, I can't come out because we're so limited on staff. So to me, that's gotta be our number one issue, if we're not, if we're focused on all these other things and we're not focused on safety, then what do we have? If we're living in unsafe town, that's a problem, so we need to make sure our police force is properly staffed. And that we can keep our citizens safe, so to me, that's the number one, my number one issue and has been from day one. Is that we need to make sure we address the police force and granted with Chief Savano's statement that came out recently. You know, it's been brought up more, but to me, it should have always been a number one statement because anyone who, you know, has been paying attention to this town. Uh, knows that's been an issue for quite some time and we need to address that. So that's, that's really my number one issue that hasn't been addressed is safety. And then includes, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna forget about, I'm talking about police. But our fire department too, I mean, fire department is absolutely part of our safety, so we need to make sure they're, they're fully staffed. Um, and and they're in the best position possible because we know fires are so critical. Where we are and obviously we've been through, you know, the nightmare last year. We need to make sure our fire department is is properly staffed uh and equipped so that we can deal with that.
Yeah, as long as I can remember, the police staff has been underemployed based on our population, so. It's actually interesting, I have to interject because there are police officers just uh outside my office and they're like, hey, what's going on? I think they're just like cruising the downtown, cause they didn't know what was even up there, so that's a good sign in downtown. Um, okay, so you've already touched on the current general plan, but given the upcoming general, upcoming general plan updates. Uh, where do you see Petaluma in ten to fifteen years?
Yeah, so where I see Petaluma, what my vision is, what I really hope. Is that we're able to get the second smart station built. Um, because that's gonna alleviate a lot of traffic on our roads and our freeways. So getting that east side's a smart station is critical, cause again, it's gonna serve so many more actual commuters. That are now, you know, not necessarily taking public transportation, but that are driving their car. Um, so getting that second east, east side smart station is critical. Obviously parking to go with it because people, you have to make it easy, the more difficult you make it. Uh, the less people are gonna use it, so it has to be, I mean, I use Bard all the time. When I was going to school in the city, I took Bard all the time, it was really easy to have the parking lots. You could hop on the train and go wherever you needed to very quickly and efficiently and I've taken Smart with my little ones. And it's easy, it's actually very easy to use. So if we put a smart station on the east side with parking, that could absolutely help our traffic situation. Um, I'd also like to see obviously Rainier finally built. Uh, the Rainier cross connect, count connector has been promised for how many years, since the sixties before I was born. Um, and it's one of those things that was promised really to the east side and we haven't done it. So we need to do it to make people's lives easier because, well, it's not a panacea, it's not gonna solve all the issues. It will help and also safety wise, right? When you have a direct access to our hospital. That's huge, cause Petaluma Valley is the only one with an emergency room. And if you have an emergency on the east side, or excuse me, the west side during traffic, I mean, good luck getting over Washington or through the freeway. Fast, so if we have another connector that can take some of that traffic on and people can get to the hospital easier and safer. Uh, you know, an emergency situation where every second counts, that's huge. And then what we have a a real ability to do with that Rainier cross town connector. Is actually make it walkable and bikeable. So we can have a true cross town connector, cause I mean, you know, if you walk or or bike across Washington, you know, it could be pretty dangerous. So if we're able to build a cross town connector that actually is walkable, is bikeable. And can actually direct people from the west side right to the hospital for safety reasons. Uh, I I just think it's one of those things that we absolutely should do for a number of reasons and, you know, people talk about disasters happening, we had the fires. We're in earthquake territory, if a disaster does happen, just having one more cross town connector is gonna help. To make sure that the east and west sides of towns are able to connect, so to me, obviously the Rainier. Um, cross county connector is huge and then also I'd like to see what happens with the station area development plan, so that's by the west side, the downtown uh train station. So we obviously have a lot of open space that is supposed to be for development. Um, more, you know, homes, apartments, walkable. Bikeable by public transportation, so real urban development, real infill development. That our urban growth boundary has said, you know, we all voted or many of us voted for the urban growth boundary, which I'm totally in favor of. But that means we have to have infill, there's, there's no other choice, you, you have to do infill. And so those are two spots that you could really do an amazing job, that I I foresee something like Theater Square. And there's been renderings, but if we do something like that and that just adds to our Terrance character that adds to us, if we do it right. The architecture is proper, goes with our towns, you know, feel. Uh, could be amazing and really push our town forward in a lot of ways and also make it more affordable for people to live and give them more options. So, you know, putting that together, I think in ten or fifteen years, that's reasonable and obviously getting one on one widened through Petaluma will will help immensely. Uh, so we won't be the bottleneck anymore. So when you put all that together, that's kind of where I see Petaluma, but we also need to to keep our agricultural heritage. Um, and then we can get, you know, touch on the fairgrounds later, but you know, that's all part of it. Um, we keep our agricultural, you know, who we are, um, that that plays a lot into it too of keeping us Petaluma.
Alright, so uh, my last question here is if there's any additional information you'd like to provide.
Yeah, uh, you know, again, I think it comes down to, you know, people always ask what the candidates are about and and what they they stand for. And I think it's, I've been really clear and I'm not mincing any words, is that safety is my number one priority. I need to make sure that our police force is better staffed, our fire department is taken care of. Uh, than infrastructure, so making sure we get that Rainier cross town connector, we fix our roads. So our roads are in a lot better position and we have, we have a a an opportunity to do that a little bit more. Because uh, we have to vote no on Prop Six. So Prop Six is essentially repealing the gas tax that was placed on us. Um, it it, the gas tax was placed on us in an interesting way where it didn't go to the public to vote, so I understand why there's. You know, some people that are upset about that, but at the end of the day, that is funding our roads. That that's gonna be a huge boom to us because number one, if that, if you vote no on Prop Six, that means that one on one is gonna get widened through Petaluma. It's already been approved, it's ready to go, they just need the funding, right? So Prop Six will will handle that funding through one on one. So that, that's a huge piece, when one on one gets widened, they're gonna build the oh interchange by Rainier, right? They're gonna build the bridge, uh, the city of Petaluma has already put money in uh to SCTA to have that bridge built properly. So you can actually run Rainier over it, so Rainier actually is at the precipice of actually happening. So that's all based on the, you know, voting no on Prop Six. Then also, we get an extra about a million dollars a year from Prop Six, so the gas tax money. To, that has to by law only go to street repair and fixing roads, all that, all infrastructure. So if we're able to get that, that can be a huge boom to us in terms of repairing more roads, paving more streets, putting us in a better position. So I think that's big and then obviously, you know, we need more housing for young families, seniors and working people. Uh, that's a big issue, but we need to actually not try to do it kind of Band-Aid and and try to fix it, that really won't fix it. We have to come up with real solutions that are gonna help people, uh, so that's a big thing. And then also obviously the future of the fairgrounds, so to me, those are, those are kind of my big issues that I'm really focused on, obviously we have a lot more. Uh, but those are my big ones and and we can talk more about those if you wish, but those are my kind of my big four.
Yeah, so you uh brought up two different issues that I would like uh to expand on, so let's start with the fairgrounds. What's your vision for the fairgrounds?
Yeah, so I was, I've actually been endorsed by Save the Kennelworth Park, so that's the group that's actually trying to save the fairgrounds. Because really to me, the fairgrounds are are really an homage to our agricultural heritage, I mean, they, that's who Petaluma is, right? We're an agricultural town. So we need to have the fairgrounds and we need to have the fair. Now, to me is what it's gonna look like, I don't exactly know, I do want the fair. But you know, part of my vision is, I would love to see the police station, that's right now in a morgue. Go somewhere centrally located down there, so it actually can serve the east and west sides easily. And also be able to access, you know, the freeway right there, so we can get all over town, so I'd love to see that. Our crumbling number one fire stations or the fire stations downtown, it'd be great if we could get there and and also I'd like to see long term, it'd be great if we could get some kind of event center. Something like that, because again, it's something we could bring in. Uh, who knows, musical acts, entertainment acts into town, bring that, but also businesses. Cause if you want to have a conference that's over about four hundred, four hundred and fifty people, there's not a venue inside. That you can have that conference and we have a lot of tech companies, you know, we have a lot of wine companies, agricultural companies. That have big events and and we're a desirable place to be. So if we had a place that people could actually come with their businesses, bring people into town, fill our hotels and have that kind of conference center. That would be huge, then when the fair is is in in process, right, the fair is going, they can use that for their own services. And for their own use, so I think it could benefit the whole community. Um, and then in terms of anything else, I think that's a public discussion we need to have, cause right now. Anyone who's running on for city council except for Dave King doesn't actually know what the goal is. And what's going on, because all the discussions have been private, right, between the city council and the fair and the city manager. So we don't know what the goal truly is from the city or what they're trying to do because it hasn't been made publicly. And I do want to change that in terms of, I want to have public forums. Where people are able to express, hey, what do we want to see as a city of the fairgrounds, cause that's a critical piece of, of property and it means a lot to a lot of people. So let's get the public input on, hey, what do you want to see there, what, you know, do we want to see it the same? Or do we wanna, are we okay with some minor changes or some different changes while we keep the fair? But also add, you know, services to our town and and better our town, so that's a conversation we need to have. But it hasn't happened and we need to have it publicly, so I'm a really big proponent of, let's have those public forums. Cause someone may have an amazing idea that we just haven't heard of yet, cause we haven't asked. So to me, we need to have that, so that's kind of where I stand with the fairgrounds is, I would like to see it improved. Um, obviously, but I do want to keep the fair, hundred percent, absolutely. Uh, but we have, we just have to see, cause none of us truly knows, again, because all been closed session with city council.
Well, I just wanted to say that Dave King is the incumbent that's running for city council, just in case you.
Yeah.
Didn't know that, uh, so I wanted to say that. So, I want to get back to affordable housing later, because I. You grew up in Petaluma and I do really think as someone that grew up on the east side and then moved to the west side. That there is this very distinctive divide and I've said during every single radio show so far. That the census tract that I grew up in is now one of the poorest in Petaluma, uh, and has very poor health outcomes. Uh, compared to like the Cherry Valley census tract, and so I'm just wondering, you talked a lot about opening up to the community, but. How do we engage these people that have felt relatively detached? From the process, because it is, you know, city halls on the west side, it's a very. West side oriented city, uh, in my opinion, after growing up on the east side and there was this huge divide. Uh, so, how do we get those people involved, I hate to say those people, but how do we get those residents? Involved that aren't necessarily involved now?
Yeah, well, no, so it's really about the city being more proactive and I think we, with social media, you actually have a really good opportunity to do that. Uh, cause my, you know, my vision, if we can actually institute it. Would be to do like a weekly or bi-weekly or even monthly video update. From someone in the city, whether it be this, I I don't know if the city manager does, it's someone from the council, but it would be awesome, cause I do this in my own business. Uh, why don't we do a video of explaining what is going on with the city, like what are the hot topics, what is city council facing? I mean, just for instance, the tubs, right? A lot of people said, I didn't even know this was happening until they pretty much approved it. Well, if we had a sit, if we had an update about the projects that were going through the planning commission. The projects that were going through the art committee, the projects, whatever issues are coming up on city hall and there was like a, you know, say a ten minute video. Of just, hey, this is what's coming on, this is what's going on. You know, here, this is where you can go to find more information and to do something that can be easily shared on our website, on social media, people could share it. They could watch it and then you put them in a position where you've made it easy for them, they have to, they take that initiative to watch the video, right? But at the same time, if you make a video, it's super easy to see on any device, your social media, your mobile phone, you know, whatever. Um, and do an update, I think that'd be awesome to get more people involved and to make it easier to get involved, cause that's what it's about, it's not that people necessarily don't care. It's if you have kids, you have a busy life, you know, whatever it is. The day goes by and you're like, man, the day's already over, I'm I'm too tired, I can't deal with it, I don't even want to know, but. If we can put a video together and send it out, people can sign up on mailing list, you know, however we get it out. Now, but just here, here's ten minutes, here's what's going on in the city, if you want more information, this is where you go. But we're just gonna give you a recap, I think it could make it much easier, much more user friendly. To get more people involved in actually what's going on with the city and then actually getting involved, cause once you get involved. You tend to stay involved and you, cause you realize the importance of it and that you do have power. I mean, again, you know, and it comes down to, when people say my vote doesn't count, that's crazy. That's absolutely crazy, we've had presidential elections that have been decided, you know, by very few votes. Uh, we've had local elections, our last election, the mayor was decided by eighty-four votes, what do you mean your vote doesn't count? But it's getting more people involved to get their voice out and of all levels, so I think that's that's kind of critical and I see that to get and even young people involved. Let's do video, let's do video updates, let's get people more involved and then as far as, you know, getting people on. You talked about east-west desire, uh, divide, well, I lived on, I grew up on the west side, you know, from when I moved here. And then I lived on the east side for eight years and I just moved back to the west side. So I've been on the east side for a lot, my business is on the east side, so I completely understand. But it's, it's getting that, I think, a couple of things, number one, we need to push Rainier forward, because I think a lot of people on the east side are like, look. You've promised us, they've been promised, you know, in past councils, that you're gonna do this for us and you have it. So if someone kept ignoring you and promising things but not delivering, would you kind of, you know, kind of, you guys clearly don't care about us. Uh, so it's one of those things, that's why I want to push forward to show, look, let's get Rainier done, that's, it's a big project for the east side and it benefits the west side given, but. It's one of those things that I think will help the east side a lot. Um, and it's also having that open discussion with doing videos, getting more people involved. Uh, and realizing that this is a whole city, it's not just based on the west or east side. Everyone's involved and everyone's opinion matters, so I I think those are, you know, some things that could help, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to a lot of uh people that have moved here recently and they really have noted that it seems like it's two different cities. And.
That was with the planning, really, I mean, no, but I mean, you think of it. The west side, you have a totally different feel in terms of, the houses are, you know, started building eighteen and nineteen hundred, you know, early nineteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds. So you have that historic house, you have where, you know, down by the river, you had all the buildings and everything and the old brick buildings, you have a different feeling that downtown was created there. When the east side was built, it was more of after the war, the baby boomers, right, they were just throwing up houses for a while. It was very tracked, it was just mass production because you had that big boom of population, people coming back from the war. So there wasn't a planning involved, where west side developed a little more slowly over the years. Where the east side kind of got thrown up, uh, really, very quickly because again, of the demand. In that time, so there wasn't the planning that was, or just that, it it just didn't get designed the same as the west side, not bad or good. It just was a planning at that time was more tract homes. You know, mass production because they needed it. Where the west side, you have a lot more one offs. Or the neighborhoods got built, but they took a long time to build them, say, you know, there wasn't a project after project necessarily. Where on the east side, it was, it seemed to be okay, every decade, there were three projects, you know, big projects going on to build. Um, in all that farmland, so I I think that's why it is, I don't think it was negatively done necessarily. I think it was just at the time, especially when the baby boomers after the war ended, we needed housing and we needed it fast. There's a big population growth, so I think it just wasn't, there wasn't a forethought or a planning put in. Because they were just more interested in getting houses up than really thinking it out. So to me, I don't think it's any ominous, I just think it was during that time, it made sense.
And I agree with that, I uh, don't think there was anything wrong with the development on the east side, obviously, my family moved up here from San Francisco. Cause my parents wanted to own a home and that was impossible in San Francisco. So I definitely don't think there's anything wrong with the development, but I don't think it was planned for.
It wasn't, it definitely wasn't, it was just a time that I think.
So you kind of started, this is obviously, the name of my show is DG, my radio personality is DG the thirty something for a reason. Uh, I think there has been, uh, I don't think, I know, we all know, but there has been a huge lack of engagement of young people and. I think it's daunting to be involved, you know, being on city council, it's like a part-time job. And if you're trying to live paycheck to paycheck with, I think, more Petaluma is than we actually consider. Uh, you know, or people have been pushed out unfortunately because of that dynamic. I I don't think there's an easy answer, but how do we get people, young people involved that are here and. They don't have the time, they don't have the time to be on commissions or be on planning commission or be on city council. You know, and so how do we get them to vote, we saw during the last election, the presidential and local election, that was a. Very low voter turnout for young people. Uh, the last presidential election was better, but still not great. So how do we, I guess maybe we could just, how do we get them engaged without maybe this major commitment of having to be on a commission?
And I think it's a couple of things, so first they need to have a candidate they think cares. I mean, really, you have to have people that care, if they think, you know, this person is just, you know, whatever, they they have their own issue and they don't care about anyone else. That's gonna disenfranchise people, so you have to have candidates that actually care, right? You also, for young people, i- it's one of those things, you also have candidates that are in your age range. I think it's tough when you have every candidate that is, and and I'm not saying this negatively, right? I I believe everyone's, you know, I, there's nothing negative about this, but. If you have an election and say everyone is sixty years old and you're a twenty-five year old, thirty year old. Maybe there's not that connection, cause you don't think they they understand where you're coming from, right? So it's nice when you actually have a candidate or candidates that are in your age group that have gone through what you've gone through recently. Um, and that you can relate to, so uh, you know, a a young family growing up, you know, they're going through town. There's different challenges through that, right, you're going through different things. So it's always nice to have a candidate that you can actually relate to and go, hey, they're in my shoes. And they've walked in my shoes, they're doing this and I want to support them, so I think it's also getting candidates that are in your age range. That care, that really want to make a difference, that you can get behind and actually support, I think that's the biggest thing, is you see someone that you can connect with. Um, and it's just, it is life. Um, when we see people that we can connect with and we, and they've gone through our shoes or they're going through what we're going through. There's just that connection pieces, peace, so it can actually get them energized. Um, and again, doesn't mean that someone older can't, you know, have, you can't connect with them, it just, it it's nice to see. People, you know, in your age range that are running for, so I think that's a big thing that can help people get energized. Uh, the other thing is just, you know, going to social media with a younger people running for for office. Do, using that social media, using videos, using different events and venues. You know, instead of doing a community center venue, you have it at, you know, Brewster's, you have it at Taps. You have a different places, you actually go to where they are, right, you make it easy for them. You make the videos so they can watch it, that they're used to it on their mobile devices. So there's a lot of different things you can do to connect with that, but I think at the end of the day, if they can see that there is a candidate out there. That kind of understands where they're coming from and what their needs are. It can help them go, hey, I can relate to this person, I want to vote for them. So I think that's a big thing, cause again, you know, if you just, if you have no one that it's anywhere near your age range, it's a little bit hard. Uh, to get that connection, so maybe you think, they're not even listening to me, they don't care, you know, I'm not gonna vote. Um, so I think that's the thing, and then in terms of getting more involved, that's tough. Uh, you know, being my first election and granted, I've been around and been in committees and, you know, been volunteering for years in town. Uh, but it is brutal, uh, there's no doubt about the time that it takes to to be involved. Uh, and also just the election process itself, I mean, this is, I have two and a half full-time jobs right now. I'm fortunate that I'm self-employed and I have a team, including my wife, that can run my business when I'm not around day to day. But a lot of people don't have that and if you're working a nine to five job or out of town. I don't have an easy answer really, how you can get more involved in terms of, it takes a ton of time. And so if you don't have the ability to do it, it is tough, but I think if you can support candidates that are doing it. You know, and that are, that you relate to, that have your values, you can at least get behind those candidates, support them. Obviously, my, my, I'm always available, I phone and email, so if you have questions, concerns, reach out. Say, hey, you know, I I'm not okay with this, what can I do to help or, hey, I'm not okay with this, can we change this? Uh, I think can be a big thing, so it's, it's, it's a multifaceted kind of thing, but it does, uh, it does, it can help.
Yeah, I get the constant commentary, because I think the city's website is pretty archaic and I I get the constant commentary that uh. It's a poor city, so we can't deal with it, but I'll just.
Well, it is, but I mean, really DG, sir, uh, you know, when you think about this, is the website alone, if we were doing videos, say on our Facebook page. And doing a simple, you know, whatever be uh, survey mon, or not survey monkey, what's the, constant contact kind of thing? If we allow people to sign up for video updates, put it on our social media, that kind of stuff. That could help with people understanding what is going on in the city. And you know, to be able to get more involved, to actually know the issues. Do, how many people really go to the website, I mean, I don't think that's as critical, yes, we don't have the money for it.
Well, they won't, cause it's not responsive.
I know, but if, but if we put out videos, if we're sending out email blasts, if we're sending out videos on our social media page. Where so many people are, it just makes it easier, so you can go to the social media, it'll have the link directly to, hey, th- these are the topics. It'll have the link directly to, hey, th- these are the topics, click on this button to go to it. Just making it easy on them, I think it could help. And without having to revamp the website, let's just think about doing something easier and cheaper. Video. I think it'd be a huge. Huge, uh, benefit to our city and getting the information out to all demographics, not just young.
Well, and I do wanna give a plug, we do have a mobile app, which I would like to see expanded, that I was part of the development of. But you can do a lot of, uh, stuff on that mobile app. And that was, uh, a a really great success. Of the city, so please look out for that and download it and, uh, you know, use it, because more people that use it. The better chance we have of expanding it.
Absolutely.
So, just wanted to give that little plug. So, uh, you touch on affordable housing and I know. That this is not an easy issue to deal with in any community in all of California and we're. Seeing a lot of people leave California in general because of the issue. So given the, uh, you know, lack of space in Petaluma, how do we address this affordable housing issue?
Yeah, no, i- it's multifaceted again, but it's one of those things. So we have the urban growth boundary, which changes the rules we play by. So it says we have to have infill development. Now, it's one of those things, we have to have the conversation, right now, we're limited to building store, uh, five stories. On our, on our buildings. We're also, the city council is pushing through, you know, fifteen percent inclusionary housing, so when a new project, so say they build a hundred units, right, in a building. Fifteen of those units would have to be affordable housing. So income limitation. Um, uh, but to do that, you need to build up. So we as a city have to have that open conversation. If we are truly willing or wanting to. Deal with this problem and actually solve it. Then you need to bring out more supply, but at the same time, we don't wanna destroy our city. But maybe in certain areas, cause think, what's the highest building in town? What is it?
The mill?
The gray mill, but it's like ten stories high, right? And does it detract from our town? Is it a horrible thing, or is it something people go, it's kinda cool? So I think in certain areas, I'm not saying straight downtown, I'm not saying in, you know, on the east side of Dobie Creek or anything like that, I'm saying. In the downtown core, where it might be. Appropriate. Maybe we go higher, maybe we we go up, bigger buildings. Uh, again, addressing the infrastructure, so there's, there's a proper parking, proper access to smart. Proper access to bike and walkability to downtown and all the services. But I think that's kind of a project that we have to look at moving forward is. Maybe we do need to go higher, how high? I don't know. That's a conversation we have to have as a town, there might, we might come as a city and say, we don't want to go up high. Okay, that's fine, but realize you're not gonna solve the problem. We're at that that time. We're running out of land. So there's only one way to go is up. How far, how high are we willing to go? To deal with this. I mean, again, if you build a a very big building and you can put a hundred units in a very small space. That makes sense, and plus for the developer. It makes sense, cause it can pencil out, they can put fifteen inclusionary units in there, that actually makes a difference. Cause if you're limited to, say you only build a three-story building. What does that equate to? Two inclusionary units? So two people get low-income housing? Uh, that that's not gonna solve anything, but if you start building, hey, fifteen, twenty. You know, you can start making a dent and helping people, so I think that's one of those things, we have to have that conversation of. Hey, where does it make sense to build up and how far, how tall are we willing to go? Because that's the only way it's gonna solve the problem, but I think also environmentally. It makes sense, because again. You have people, you put them in those downtown cores or that area. Where it's walkable, it's bikeable, close to public transportation, close to freeway, everything is there. So they could go to the store, do all their errands, it would be a big boom to our local businesses, our restaurants, our retail shops. Everything, when every, you build kind of a mini-community. In those projects, you know, when you do something like that. So I think that's really the answer to help solve the problem. Uh, cause there's really other note, it's a supply issue, it's a simple supply issue, this is economics. Um, it's an emotional issue. I get a lot of people are making emotional decisions. Or pushing emotional solutions that are actually gonna make it worse. But if we talk about, hey. Where can we build? Up. And build bigger projects that are applied like they're doing downtown San Francisco, or excuse me, uh, Santa Rosa. Um, then let's think about that, and I think there's a perfect, uh, city we can look for. Is in, if anyone's been to, you know, Victor- uh, Victoria in British Columbia. It's on an island, small space, they've got eighty thousand people, so not, not much bigger than us, very en- environmentally conscious, beautiful city. It's got a mix of single families, apartments, condos, but it's downtown core. Near a historic downtown, right, the old Gold Rush and that kinda thing. Beautiful downtown, but what they've done is they built up. But they've made the buildings fit in with how it looked, with that downtown. And that downtown is beautiful, walkable, big tourist draw. I mean, it's amazing place, people wanna live there. And it didn't destroy the charm or the character of the town. So there is a way to do it if we're smart about it. And we take our time, we do it properly. There is a way to actually build those developments that do go higher without destroying our town and. At the same time, helping bring on more supply and dealing with our affordable housing issue, cause there, there is no other issue. You know, people wanna put out other solutions, none of it's gonna work unless you bring on more supply, that's the only thing. But. You know, we have our urban growth boundary, which I'm fully in favor of. That means we need to infill and we need to build up. So that's kinda where we are.
Yeah, I remember the promise when the Keller Street Garage was built, that they were gonna build it up and. I know the biggest argument is that it ruins the.
Viewline, sideline, yeah.
The city, uh, so I know that that's. That is definitely a consideration.
But that has to be a conversation we have to have, because you cannot say. I want, you can have people say, I want affordable housing, I wanna help people, but we can't build up. Cause really, we're with our urban growth boundary, which again, fully supportive of. That's really the only answer, it really is. Other than do nothing and it keep going more expensive. So, I mean, we have a choice, and that's fine, however the city wants to go, but we need to have that open conversation.
Well, and so, uh, I think one of the other issues that came up is that we obviously had an emergency almost a year ago. Now, and, uh. I'm just wondering, eh, how perhaps. I remember driving from my house at six AM and it just seemed like the apocalypse, there was people all over the roads. And, uh, I've been through the fires in Santa Barbara and I felt like it was a little bit more, uh, intuitive about how it was all set up. So. How, and I'm not knocking the city Petaluma, they did a great job deploying their city employees, but. How do we kinda prepare for those issues going forward?
Well, that's one of those things, I mean, the city and the fire department, police department already have those plans in place, especially after those fires. I mean, everyone's gonna make sure they're dialed in, right? We're gonna be able to be in the best position, and then. And I believe the city every year, the fire department does, you know, goes, has a plan. They present the city council, uh, of what their plan is essentially, so that's out there, they planned for it. The thing is, we also have a lot of areas with the fairgrounds being one. We have an area for a disaster, so if a disaster happens like the fire did, we have a staging place. And then in the backup, if it got even worse, we have the airport. So we do have somewhere on the east side, somewhere on the west side. And that's where I think Rainier comes into it, again, eh, if a huge, say an earthquake, forget fires, I mean, we have those, but. Eh, what if we have an earthquake and a lot of our bridges, you know, fall down? Just having another option. And the new bridge over Rainier is gonna be to the new specs, right? So it should be able to withstand a pretty, pretty hefty earthquake. Um, it's one of those things, just having another cross-town connector puts us in a position where the east doesn't get cut off from the west side. So we can actually, you know, help each other as a town, but. We already have the area, we have the fairgrounds on the west side, we have the airport on the east side. So, you know, and the fire department, police department already have their plans. So we're probably as prepared as we can, and obviously people are heightening awareness with what's going on, um, you know, so many people got. Have had relatives, including, you know, my in-laws who lost their house. So we're, a lot of people have have prepared as best they can and so is the city, so I I I don't think there's necessarily. Um, another step we can take unless, you know, there's, uh. We're unfunded in some area, you know, with the fire department plan says, hey, this is a major issue, we need to deal with that. Outside of that, I mean, they're thinking of things like this. So I don't know if there's anything else we, we need to do at this point.
No, and I would say that, uh, I'm just kinda wondering about the sharing of information, because that seems to be a major issue. It had nothing to do with the response, it had nothing to do with that. But there was definitely a breakdown in the sharing of information, so.
Yeah, and and obviously, I think a lot, a lot of people learned a lot during this tragedy. So hopefully, I mean, that, and the state's working on that, obviously, there, everyone is working on this. When you go through something like this, especially this, uh, hopefully is a once-in-a-generational, if not more. Uh, disaster, but it's when you go through this. You learn where your weaknesses are, where your strengths are, and you try to improve that, right? So that's where they are right now, as they saw where our problems were, the fire and police. And so they've been working on, on solving that essentially to get better, but. You know, in a disaster like that, where it was scary, I mean, really scary. It's one of those things, y- you have all the training, you have all the plans. Sometimes things do go a little haywire, because again. You know, not everything goes to plan, and it's a very scary time, so sometimes people don't always act. Um, you know, sanely, because they are so scared. So there's always wrenches that can be thrown in, but at the end of the day, there is a plan and and. We've gone through this enough that we should be prepared, as we're gonna be, essentially at this point.
So, uh, to go to a completely different subject, the, uh, art project on the riverside promenade came up. And, uh. This kinda came up during my last interview that I'm wondering, I didn't even know it was happening, and I am very civically engaged, so. My question is, is there was public meetings that were available, as I heard after the fact. But, uh, and this money was earmarked for public art, I wanna emphasize that, that, you know, a lot of people have come forward and say, well, why isn't it for this? Why isn't, it was earmarked for that. Uh, it was a tax put on the developers here. But I'm wondering, you know, because the committees and commissions answer the city council. What role does the city council have or could they have in making sure that these decisions are known? And are broader, because for me, and this is just, I don't know. The background on it, but it seemed like the art commission kinda just made this decision to hold these public meetings at perhaps were not neutral locations, I don't know.
Yes.
But you know, what role does the city council have kind of, eh, eh, for me, it's like checks and balances with the committees and commissions?
Yeah, well, the art committee was totally different, I mean, so I served as a chair of the transit advisory committee. So we were an advisory committee, so essentially, you know, when we, when something came to us, we would review it, we would give a recommendation. To the city council for them to vote on. So whatever recommendation, like, uh, you know, when I was just on the, uh, the chair the last year. Our tr- our bus contract was up with MV. So we had to go through the whole bidding process of finding a new op- or looking at different operators. Uh, we ended up going with our current operator, MV, uh, but we went through that process. So once the, the, the advisory committee went through the bidding process, went through the interviews, all that. With their, we came up with our final recommendation. We voted on it, but it had to go to city council to actually be approved, the city council was the last stop. How this art committee was set up was, the art committee was kinda the last stop. So eh, eh, once it got to the city council, the city council technically didn't even need to vote on it. Because it wasn't something, the art committee had full control over that project. So if we don't want that to happen in the future, then what we do is we change the art committee to more of an advisory committee like everything else. Uh, just like the airport com- advisory committee. You know, every other committee that we have, a senior advisory committee, et cetera. Uh, that, cause those committees are just supposed to make recommendations to the city council, but ultimately, it's the city council's decision to actually vote and implement those decisions. So that's something you could absolutely change. Uh, the other thing is, again, with my idea of. Of getting things out on video and and doing updates, is if we had talked about this, you know, the very beginning and gotten a video out and shown. I think if we had shown people and given them the background of these tubs. Then it shouldn't have gotten to the, you know, point where people said, I didn't know about this. Cause again, if we had some kinda update. To everybody, of like, hey, these are the projects coming down the pipeline. Here's where you go for more information, that could absolutely help, and so we don't get to that, I mean, there's always gonna be someone. Who doesn't, you know, eh, again, I talked to some people now who go. I just heard about these tubs, and it's like, you know, the, it seems to be the big issue, but there still are people that. That are just finding out now about this, after all this time, so. Uh, but you can only do the best you can, but I do think you could change that committees into more of an advisory. So that the city council would have the, the last say.
Well, and I also wonder, you know, because the planning commission does, I mean, of course, the city council did officially vote on the art project, although.
It was just an advisory vote, they just said, if it had come to us, we would vote this way, it wasn't anything official though.
Right, so I also wonder with these kinda projects, like what the planning commission has to say, because the planning commission is a big part of this and. I'm wondering personally why that isn't also a conduit from these advisory committees, because it is a planning issue.
It is, and well, that's, that's something that can be changed, I mean, as of how it was. It went through how it was set up. So if we're unhappy that the particular project was chosen, where it was put. Then that's something that could be changed in the future of, hey. Let's make this like the rest of the committees where they give recommendations. But it's ultimately the city council that votes on it, so that can be changes that can be done. But it's one of those, again, the discussion we have to have, is that something we want to do? Cause it was set up like this. So it wasn't, and it wasn't by mistake that it was set up like this, so ha- if we've changed our minds and we don't want it that way, then we can have that discussion.
Well, I think the major question that myself and a lot of people have, is that solely a city council decision, is that a general plan decision? What does that look like?
Yeah, well, the art committee, I don't know if that's necessarily a general plan per se, I mean, eh, our general plan can have art in it, right? Um, but it's one of those things where the art committee, they decided, I mean, in our plan, they decided that they wanted to put it downtown. And so that's, that's where they decided this project should be. Now, you know, again, in the future, if we wanna change what their purview is, what their responsibilities are, what they have control over, we can. But how it's set up, they went through, you know, the proper channels, again. Eh, the information wasn't disseminated, eh, in a, in a good way, and I think that that was the big thing, is people didn't know that this was coming. And they also feel left out because. They didn't like it. They weren't able to give their input as much as, especially early on. Um, and 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 truly, I think the art committee. You know, I I think the biggest mistake was, instead of picking an artist, which they tried to do the first time and it didn't work, but that doesn't mean you don't try again. Instead of picking an, eh, that, eh, an actual art piece, excuse me, instead of picking an art piece. They picked an artist, and this is what we got out of it, so I think if we had. Maybe been a little more forward-thinking and just gone, tried it again and tried to actually pick an art piece. As a part of an artist, then there'd be actually more control over this, because remember, we picked the artist. He came up with this concept. And I, I just think that was kinda the mistake of the art committee, not necessarily they made a bad decision. But eh, eh, to do it over again, I think that it would've been nice to actually pick a piece as, as opposed to an actual artist.
And you'll get my full opinion on this on election night, cause I'm gonna be broadcasting, I'm not gonna say it now. Uh, but, uh, so is it the city council though that changes the scopes? Of the committees, or what does that look like?
Well, no, that, that's the thing, is that can all be, that can actually be moved forward by the city council and and, eh, really, who runs the city is our city manager. Um, so all that can be publicly discussed and whatever changes need to be made can be made, but that's, that's an open discussion that we can have if, if enough people. You know, if it warrants making that decision.
Well, I think this is really interesting, because we know our city manager is retiring, and so. Uh, of course, there's a job description, but because I, you brought it up, I'm wondering how you foresee, eh, an effective city manager. Given, you know, the future of Petaluma.
Yeah, no, I, eh, and the city manager is critical, cause this is the thing, I I don't know if eh, you know, enough people realize. The city council's job is this kinda set policy, right? This is the direction we wanna go. It's the city manager's job and the staff to actually implement that policy. And also to give guidance to the, to the city, they're, they're essentially who runs the city on a day-to-day basis. So it's one of those things, having a great city manager is critical for the health of any ci- eh, any city. So having the, the two things that I would like to see are, with someone who has experience. Kind of, no one solved any of our problems we're dealing with, no one solved the pension issue. No one solved, you know, how do you hire more cops or, you know, that kinda stuff, I mean, none of that has been solved a hundred percent. But eh, if a city manager right now, maybe he's, eh, he or she is an assistant city manager or has experience. I would love to see someone that has that experience of how do we? Develop our police department, how do we di- to deal with a smaller police department, how do we build them up, make sure they're fully staffed? How do we, uh, maximize our money that we get in terms of for our projects, for our street, how do we do that? How do we move forward with the fairgrounds? How do we do that in a more public way? Um, you know, that actually gets public input, so having someone that really has that background and understanding, especially with public safety, how do you deal with pensions? How do you deal with that? I mean, do you have some good ideas? Because a lot of these issues, especially like pensions, things like that, it's more of an estate. The city can only do so much, we, we're obligated to it, but we can only do so much. It's also a societal issue, it's a state issue with, eh, because there's things you can do with the pension reform in terms of the amortization. You can actually amortize it for a longer period of time, if the state would allow it, which would, would help our cash flow, would reduce our payments. Uh, that we have to do on it, so there's, there's things that can be done, and there's a lot of cities in our same, eh, you know, same position that are on the financial brink. That have big pension liabilities, that are struggling in certain areas. I would love to find someone who's got some experience dealing with that. Maybe not solving it per se, cause eh, again, I don't think anyone's completely solved these issues, otherwise everyone would be doing it. But how has someone taken their current city and improved it? And dealt with some of the same issues, again, that we're dealing with, with the pensions, with our police department needing a lot of help, with our fire department needing help. And improved it, and dealt with some of the same issues, again, that we're dealing with, with the pensions, with our police department needing a lot of help, with our fire department needing help. Um it's one of those things, I that's what I wanna see, someone who's proactive, not reactive, and that has had experience dealing with some of those issues that they could lead us through. Cause that's really what the city manager's job is, is to help lead us through, uh and give us that advice and to run the city on a day-to-day basis, so that's what I'd like to see, we have a huge opportunity to do that. Cause it's a, it's a, I mean, ultimately, we live in a beautiful area and eh the compensation is is very solid, so I mean, it's something that. Which I know you, yeah, I I, I know your thoughts on that, but but what I'm saying is, we are in a position, we should be able to hire a very quality person. That the hope is, obviously, they have some experience in these issues and can move us forward and be proactive, not reactive, so that's what I'd like to see.
So uh you have young children and so I would kind of like. For me, I don't think the school system has changed a lot since I was in high school, uh I. I can't, my elementary school is closed now, cause I went to BE. I'm just kinda wondering, uh you know, again, I think it's a big question, but how can we? Because again, there is this huge divide, this economic divide with our school system. So are there any strategies to make sure that all of our young kids have the same, and teenagers have the same opportunity for success in the city?
Well, and we're in an awesome position, so we have an amazing uh the city for in terms of our education, so number one, there are other charter schools, right? Um there are certain schools that, we have a di- a lot, pretty big variety of schools, whether it be public, private, um schools, so that kids actually have the ability. Like if you lived, say you lived off of Maria, but you wanted to go to Cherry Valley, that's a charter school, you could actually put in to go to it, because. The neighborhood school for that area for Cherry Valley is actually McKinley. So you do have an opportunity, I mean, that was part of the no child left behind and and that whole change. You do have an opportunity to go to whatever school you want, eh as long as they have room for you, obviously, there's there's other things in there, but you do have an opportunity to not. Only go to your your local school, but realistically in town. And again, this is coming, I've been on the board of the Petaluma Educational Foundation for years, been the, you know, recently the president, and I'm also the chair of the grant committee. Um we, I don't, I can't say there's a bad school in town, I mean, really, the teachers do an amazing job, every school has a different flavor, right? You go to Old Adobe, they have a huge garden, Cherry Valley has an arts program, I mean, eh there's there's different things at different schools. So I think there's an opportunity, we don't have a horrible school at all, we have amazing teachers, amazing people that, you know, are dedicated to our children. And we have an organization like PF that supports these schools in all the things they do, I mean, you know, you can get a grant up to fifteen thousand dollars for a major project that you wanna do. Plus, the city has given them by bonding, now some of the bond managers have passed the schools a lot of money to to make improvements. Um so I think we're an actually an amazing city that values education and our schools are really good. And I'm not saying anything's perfect, but I'm saying we have an amazing group of teachers, uh amazing, you know, group that really care about the kids and really wanna push us forward, so to me. Uh I think a lot of the kids are are really lucky.
Yeah, I have to say that I went to uh Casa, not to last year, I think then they have this whole. They used to do this open grass area, now it's this whole like garden kinda hangout. I wasn't this here, I was here, it was this flood basin and.
Yeah, and they have maker spaces, I mean, the whole thing is they have maker spaces now at the school, so eh eh again, it's one of those things, we have a really good school system. And I don't think there, eh I can't say there's a bad school, all our schools are really good and the teachers do an amazing job, so to me. Um that that kinda probably has, I don't see the schools being an issue in terms of holding a child back, because we have an amazing s- group of teachers, amazing schools overall.
So we only have about six minutes, but I'm gonna try to get into these public questions, so. There is a question about rent control and rent protection in Petaluma.
Yes, yeah, that's a big thing, so a lot of people, it's an emotional issue with rent control, um and just cause eviction, two huge issues. And eh again, it comes down to an emotional issue, but what I wanna look at is I look at the economics. And if you look across the board on every economist, and I and I don't wanna look at economists that have a skin in the game, I wanna look at economists that have no skin in the game in terms of. Does rent control work, right? So we have economists across the board, uh you go to USC, Berkeley. Stanford just did a recent study actually in San Francisco about does rent control really work? Um and across the board, whether they're liberal, conservative, moderate, rent control does not work, and every economist agrees, it actually makes things worse. You take off supply, you actually drive prices up, and and the study that just came out, uh Stanford uh graduate school did. Uh looking at San Francisco said there are winners and losers, and essentially, uh what they do is the older renters obviously get a break essentially from the rent control. What that does is it drives up the prices for everything else, so the newer renters eh pay more, and that's just as, again, you can look it up, it's a study. So I look at that as, yes, it's an emotional issue, but rent control is not gonna fix the issue, it's a Band-Aid that's not even work, it's actually make things worse. So if we, if we actually do what we talked about with it, with building bigger projects, doing inclusionary housing, actually building. To help people, that's what's gonna help people, we need to bring those on, if you do rent control, you're gonna make things worse, it's not gonna help, and in ten years. You'll be saying, why are rents so expensive? Cause if it was the end-all, why would San Francisco be so expensive? And then you have to think of this too, it's also the cost, so in Berkeley, it's about four million dollars a year that it costs Berkeley to institute the rent control. It's estimated about a million dollars in Petaluma, so what I would like to know is anyone who wants rent control, where's that money gonna come from? Are you okay, you know, shrinking our police force? Are you okay cutting our services? Are you cut- cutting our fire? Because who's gonna pay for that? And I don't wanna hear, well, the landlords are gonna pay for it, okay, well, the landlords will pass that cost on, you wanna pay, you know, cost them a couple thousand more a year. They should and will pass that cost onto the renters, therefore making it more expensive, so the market always balances itself. So it's one of those things, if I just look at the facts and just look at economists who are very brilliant, I mean, Paul Krugman, who's a Nobel Prize-winning economist, who's very liberal leaning. Rent control does not work across the board, so again, I wanna find solutions that aren't gonna make it worse, I wanna find solutions that are truly going to help people. And unfortunately, rent control is just not one of those solutions, and just cause we don't have enough time to get into, but. Again, I'm looking at things that are actually going to improve our situation, not make them worse, and if we just look at the science, if we look at the science of econ- economics. It does not work, so that's all I can say on that.
So again, I got. So there is a question about, well, the the state of California passed a minimum wage increase by twenty twenty to fifteen dollars. I think this question is kind of asking eh asking how it's gonna affect Petaluma, I think is the major question here.
Yeah, no, the fifteen more a dollar minimum wage, it's one of those things, now that is an issue economists don't a hundred percent agree on. It's not that they don't know what the implications of a fifteen dollar minimum wage are, they do. But they're un, it depends how you're looking at and who you think it hurts and helps. Essentially, the minimum wage does, increase in the minimum wage absolutely hurts small businesses, right, it makes it more uh tougher for small businesses to afford workers. And they've done a lot of studies, cause Seattle came out with a fifteen dollar, you know, hour minimum wage. And they've seen that entry-level workers, uh lower skilled workers actually have lost their jobs, um small businesses have been affected and and closed. And it's really hurt, but what they've seen though is more highly skilled workers, uh people in the upper income bands, middle to upper income bands. Who are skilled are actually making more money, so it is hurting people, some people, and but it is helping some people, so the net effect maybe might be good. Um so again, eh I look at the economics, that I'm not, it's not a political thing to me, it's simply that's look at the economics and the numbers. And that's one of those things, I think you can go either way, but realize, there's always consequences for everywhere you do, and if you raise the minimum wage, then that's a discussion we can have. But realize it's gonna make it tougher on small businesses, and what we see in Seattle is the unskilled and lower and entry-level workers are hurt more. And it is inflationary, it just makes everything more expensive, that five dollar McDonald's hamburger is now seven dollars. If you're okay with that, and that's what you wanna do, so be it, but realize over time, even though if you pay someone more. Everything else gets more expensive, so it ends up kinda evening out, but again, you know, if that's something that people want, we wanna see as a city, it's not that I'm completely opposed to it. I just think on the economics, realize there are unintended consequences could actually hurt people and hurt small businesses, which I'm not in favor of, um so it's something we have to be very careful of.
Well, and I guess the other question too, that I'd like to follow up with, is the state of California obviously makes a lot of decisions. Uh and have the forefront of a lot of great things, but they also make a lot of decisions, and I'm just wondering how. I I I guess once the decisions are already made, perhaps an issue, but how is the city, do we prepare? And perhaps try to assist people to be involved before the decision is made? But then also help people understand what the implications once the decision has been made.
Yeah, and but that's the other thing we have to be clear, and again, you know, I go back to it, I've said it enough times, but if we do some kinda updates, whether it be weekly, monthly, you know, some updates. Of hey, here's what's going on, here's how it affects you, but I think we have to, this is the thing, so many issues are very emotional, I mean, the bathtub issue. Became emotional, right, you know, there was a big battles online, things like that, which is really unfortunate. But we have to, to me, I have to just look at the facts, right, part of the job of being a leader, and 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 as I see a a proper city council is. You can't just go on the emotion, you also have to look at the facts, and you have to really research everything and make sure that there what, or at least. Know what the unintended consequences are, so if you implement, say, rent control, realize what it's gonna do. Don't be blinded that, you know, this is gonna be a panacea and help everything, realize that there are gonna be negative unintended consequences that are gonna hurt people. Uh same thing for minimum wage, it's not a bad or good thing, it's here are, here are the facts, here's what's gonna happen, here's who gets hurt, here's who benefits. Are we willing to do this? As long as we know the facts, so I think it's one of those things of having leadership and city leaders that look at the facts. And the science, cause we have a big thing with right now, you know, people want our current administration uh to look at the science, they think, you know, admit that there's, you know, global warming. But yet, when we get to economic decisions or economic things, we go with what people feel, as opposed to looking at the simple economic facts. And again, there's certain issues that are pretty in undisputed in the whole economist community, so let's go with people that are smarter than us, that know what they're doing. Um and that have already seen cities that have done it, what the consequences are, and again, if we wanna go against it all, and we wanna implement things, and that's fine. Just don't be blinded and say you weren't told that there are huge unintended consequences for your decision, so that's just something we need to do, is actually have real decisions as opposed to emotional.
Alrighty, well, I wanna thank you so much for being in the studio, we need to wrap up. So uh my next interview is going to be with Mister Alonso on the eighteenth. And I did wanna mention, cause I just decided that I am going to be doing a commentary on election night, November sixth, I'll be here at seven o'clock. From a sale, um so uh like I said, uh like I have said. The all the interviews by the end of the week will be on my website, which is D O M E N I C A dot ninja. Um and you can, uh I have all the contact information, so please direct your questions for candidates directly to them. If you have questions for me, you can direct them towards them, again, you are here with DG the thirty something on State of the Union. Uh KPCA.fm one oh three point three, right here in Petaluma, thank you.
Thanks.